Let's start.
Maps.
Weren't those distributed?
No, no.
We'll get the one.
She didn't have that for everybody.
Yes, she did.
Were they different?
There was in some of the places she didn't have one.
Does that say you're supposed to have alternative two?
She had to change them out.
She changed them out.
She said she put the wrong one out here first.
Alternative two?
She changed them out because she said she put the wrong one back here first when she talked to you.
At the very bottom corner?
Does that make sense?
Are we on two?
We're on two.
So we met with the Corps of Engineers. You recall, we reported that we'd had a meeting with them and they said they were going to go back and get updated numbers on the alternatives that were being considered for flood mitigation. And they did that. And they came back to meet with us and they provided the data sheets which was in your packet for three alternatives. You only got one of them. And I'll explain why. And you're welcome to have the rest of them if you'd like. So the representatives from the levee district and the mayor and the, and met with them and we went over it. And it was fairly unanimous that if we're going to pick one of the three alternatives, that the one before you was the most desirable of the...
This is not right. Just go alternate three. Alternate three?
Alternative two.
Yeah. That's the difference. I got alternate two. This says alternate three. But what the heck's the difference?
I don't know. I'll have to go through it. So what alternate two provides is a combination of levee construction, bridge replacements, and an eye wall, which is just a manufactured retaining wall that is constructed along the alignment that's shown, and I apologize, this is the best reproduction they could give us. There's this yellow line you can see kind of faintly running underneath the detention area and then up by Shawna's house and then crossing the Fourth Street and going back down, creating kind of across Third Street, tying into the existing levee that's there, which may or may not be adequate. We're not sure if it has to be changed. And it contains, it produces three, three ponding areas. And the, to our, our great surprise, the cost of doing that, we've been, you know, I wasn't here when this first came up, but everybody was saying it's $16 million to do the creek. It's down to 12 million, including acquiring two homes. Shawna's is one of those. It would be included in the year again. It's up here in this detention area. I don't know who owns it, but you'll see a note on there that it's...
It isn't on there.
Is it Sharon Hasty's house? No?
It might be, it might be Kevin's. I'm not sure.
Is it the first house on the left?
Well, there's only one house on the right after...
It would close Leahy Street at...
Kevin's is on the right.
Just upstream of Fourth Street. Because the, the eye wall kind of gets into Shawna's, what's now her front yard.
Well, and he also said too, that if they take that bridge and raise that bridge, it would cause distress to my home.
So it, all of a sudden, you know, after all these years of thinking it's undoable, it became doable. Now, included in this was the discussion of, okay, if we pick an alternative and you put it in your report, then we can, we can agree to use the funds that we have today to perform elements of this, this work. I don't know exactly what we would do, but the bridge work is certainly the obvious one. And the, and then whatever we do counts against our, our match when you get funded.
What's our match again?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
But by, but by doing work at the real cost, instead of at the inflated values that the Corps of Engineers ends up spending when they do the same work, we can bring the scope of the project down so the $3 million that we have becomes, you know, starts going further. And, and while we don't have the details, we, we think that it's possible by doing alternative two, that it's the, it's the least disruptive to, to people. It achieves all the goals that were established in the original flood mitigation plan and it, and we at least have enough to also do the South Creek work and maybe do the recreation And, and so we had a meeting of the levee district because should this get done, they would take ownership of it for maintenance. The, the main issue here is there's a lift station involved in this project. You'll see it called out on it. So they would have to be cooperative in taking over ownership of the lift station and maintaining the pumps, making sure they're running when they need to. And, and they were in support of this project because they felt that the eye wall was easier for them to maintain long-term than, than, than an earthen levee.
So they're going to take out Leahy in between Third and Fourth?
No.
No.
Leahy between Fourth and some distance upstream or west of your house.
But this is like it goes over...
It won't go so far as to, it won't take the house next to you, the vertical log?
But just on this one, it looks like, if I'm looking at the right yellow line, it goes...
Their alignment, their overlay is not perfect.
Perfect.
No, it's not.
That's why I was asking, it looks like it cuts off.
No.
Leahy Street then?
Well, it...
Either they would continue the levee to the bridge or a wall from where the levee ends about halfway down.
So the levee district said if you go with alternative two, they, they would be cooperative. And they're not going to cooperate with another one, but it was their preference. And, and so the purpose of this work session is to present this information to you, answer what questions we can, and honestly, we asked a lot of questions, so maybe we'll have the answer for whatever, whatever questions you may have. And, and then at some point, give direction to the Corps to proceed with, including an option, supposedly this option, in their report. And then when they get their report finalized, we'll talk about what elements of the work we want to do with our money that, and we'll have to enter into a memorandum of understanding with them that, that commits them to giving us credit for it down the line.
Now, what happens when they, let's say they put all this, most of these homes have to carry flood insurance. Will they rezone that because it's controlled so those people won't have to have? I mean, we're talking $800 to $1,200 a year in flood insurance times eighty...
You're still going to have to have flood insurance?
They give a new arm down on them to have to have flood insurance?
Okay. If you...
Well, first of all, flood insurance is not a requirement of the federal government. It's a requirement of the lender.
Of the lender. But there's 80 or more homes in there and some of those that are next to, near it, I get it, I understand. But up on Biltmore, with this being more controlled, would they be rezone that so...
We don't, we don't have a say in that.
But the federal comes down. Is it the FEMA?
FEMA. I mean, they, they obviously, they rezone things and gave us new maps when the, when the levee on the Mississippi went in. I would expect that they would do the same thing here because you're, you are protecting...
Controlling the water.
Oh, well.
Better, yeah. But I mean, almost all, three-fourths of the way of Biltmore, they have to have flood insurance because of when it flooded...
Because this work hasn't been done, probably.
Well, but even when they rezone, they come back and redid it, they still had to require it.
I was told, because I went through this, where my house is, it's sort of a bubble. In other words, everything else is flood plain, mine is out, but I still have to buy flood insurance because I'm in the overall zone. I was told several years ago, when this is done, they will redo the maps and it should, it should alter whether you need flood insurance or, you know, what your...
And FEMA sent that.
It's something that we don't have any control over. That's up to FEMA.
Right.
What we control is...
Everybody's got to go, the city can go to FEMA to come look at this.
So the city does that and they come back?
Well, we can, we can write a letter and things like that, just like the citizens would do.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, I know the process for getting the map changed and, and once we get this done, I think it would be a service to the citizens for the city to initiate the letter of map amendment that would, that would change everything rather than any individual property owner having to do it.
If we're all still alive.
Well, the city will still be here presumably.
What's going to be the process of to get, at least to get into, start doing Third Street? How long, you know, this has been a long time.
What is the process from today moving forward?
Today would be us sending a letter to the Corps of Engineers saying pursue alternative two. We've already paid them to finish the study. So they then will go to work finishing the study. He said about how long that would take and I'm not trying to recall, but it was...
End of the summer, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was towards the end of the summer.
But he did say, which was kind of surprising, remember him saying that once the study's completed, not even approved, we will have the go-ahead to start. We didn't, they didn't even need to wait for approval before we could start. Once it's done, it's, we can start spending.
So in, in, in the interim, in anticipation of it, we should be going over the scope of work when we know they're going to, this is going to be it and figuring out how we want to allocate our resources, which we haven't done. Because until we pick the alternative, there's nothing to do.
Do we have the 25% of this 12A?
Yes.
We have 25% or more?
We have over 3 million, yes.
Okay, well, we need over 3 million. So it's 12A, not 12, so...
Well, we have 3 million, well, actually don't, we have 3,100,000, but we're...
Close. You're pretty close.
We are confident that if this scenario is implemented, that the value of the things that we are removing from the overall project cost will give us more than our match.
Okay, and on the other thing, it doesn't include both creeks, South Creek, North Creek. Just the North Creek is what is...
You'd have extra...
The plan includes everything and the recreation. The plan will include everything. This was the biggie, but the, the big, the only realistic way on the South Creek was flood-proofing was the, and it was half a million dollars?
Yeah.
Something like that.
So where is that added in? I mean, it's also the recreation also added in? Will it go over 12 million?
Yeah, it'll be over 12 million. It'll be more like 13 or 14, but at the same time, remember when we went out and actually got pricing on the Third and Fourth Street Bridge, that we were getting estimates based on MoDOT specifications, we could build the bridge for what the Corps estimated that they could design it for.
If you look at the Third Street Bridge or the Fourth Street Bridge, mobilization was like $75,000.
And they do one for each. It's mobilization for each.
It's awesome to order that.
So that'll come down and then like you said, you think it'll, there'll be enough to do South Creek.
We're confident, yes. All of our money.
This is money that's been collected related to the levee.
We're, 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 we're...
We're not going to have to put any city money in.
And that's going to be enough for us as far as the recreation and to cover all that.
We, we're pretty confident that we can pick this apart and do things ourself outside of having the Corps do it and say a whole lot of money.
I understand that.
Their $500,000 dirt street bridge, based on people who do this work, is, is almost double what they think it would actually cost.
Now, if we go into this, is it binding or can we change it? Say, we decide not to put in a Third Street Bridge, which, which all that is in here as far as the cost?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have an understanding, a contract with them, not a contract, a memorandum of understanding from them that, that says if you do this work, you get credit for it. It will be specific as to the elements of the work, but it, it may be, we may identify more elements than we have the funds to do. I mean, if you follow what I'm saying, if we say we want to do 10 things and we only do six of the 10, we can't decide which six it is we want to do.
Because we've discussed it before, if we're going to pick it or get rid of it.
But we only get credit for what we actually spend. We don't get credit for what they thought it was going to cost.
It just brings the total down.
Right.
Because that's why we're saving money is doing it ourselves.
But presumably, we're going to spend $3 million.
Probably all of them.
Well, I mean, there's no sense not because it's all that, it's all that it can be used for and...
And how long's this been going on? I mean, I've been in my house for a long time.
The critical thing is to spend the $3 million in a way that gives immediate benefit to the citizens. You don't want to build half a levee.
No.
It's not holding anything back, you know, so you want to do discreet work, the product of which results in a, in a real benefit to the affected citizens. And that's what we have to figure out. And we know the bridges fall in that category.
So attentively, you want to do Third Street first?
Building the, building the lift station, the pump station without doing all, all of the detention, the, the levee and the, and the eye wall, they're making sense because nothing's been held back.
So who would, who's going to, who manages these projects? You say that we can do what we want. Is the Corps going to be managing what we have done? Or, I mean, who manages, there's a fee in here, a 10% management fee.
Yeah.
Who manages this project?
We're going to have to, if we do a bridge, we're going to have to hire an engineer and get the design work done and employ the inspector and make sure that, and the Corps will require that it be done according to MoDOT standards. So it just, every element becomes a public works project.
You think 10% is enough to throw those management costs?
For inspection?
Management costs.
I don't know.
So you just need a, a yea or no?
Well, we want to start sending off letters to the Corps of Engineers without the force.
I mean, eight years, I think.
Now we do consent.
But as far as the bridges, they're going to be high enough to where, if we have a, that similar to the 93 floods, we're still going to be able to go north and south, get to the north side.
We should never have an event like that again, shouldn't we?
Well, we hope not.
They're going to be built to the...
You got to build for that.
The 100-year flood elevation.
Well, this is made, well, this is for a creek. I understand that, but it's still going to be...
You should never have that creek backing up because of, you know...
But you know, usually what happens is the difference between the 100-year base flood elevation and the 500-year, it gets really nominal. So what often happens is somebody's doing the work to build a dam or a levee or set the elevation of a bridge and you look at it and you go, well, you know, I only got a, I only got a thing a foot higher to get to 500 for elevation here. And you just, it's just kind of a cost-benefit decision.
Okay.
MoDOT won't do that. MoDOT will not, will not accept anything above the 100-year because whatever that increment is, they don't want to spend it.
Well, and if we go to the 500, then that is where, that, that is a potential for FEMA to come in and decrease those rates because we're...
It's all based on the, on the 100-year.
Oh, it is.
Those FEMA maps that you see with Zone A, that's all base flood elevation.
So if we initiate and send a, a letter to the Corps that this is how we want to proceed, timeline for things begin happening?
They say they should finish their report mid to late summer. And then we should be ready to say, okay, now that you've finished your report, here's the work that we want to undertake. We want you to authorize us to do this laundry list of things for which we would get credit if you, if you get funded in 2016. They'll produce a memorandum, we'll bring it to you, we'll sign it, and it's up to us whenever we want to do the work and what, what order and what schedule.
Well, but with some Corps oversight to make sure that we're not building something that, that they're going to have to take apart to do what they're going to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Backpedaling or...
Yeah. You know, we didn't have to discuss that with them, other than them saying, we got to approve your design. I don't know that they're going to expect it.
That's where that discussion would, I wouldn't say inspect, but just with some general guidance that we didn't get out of order.
We talked about bridges. We said, do you need to design the bridges? And they said, no. It's just whenever we have them designed, design them to MoDOT standards because they don't, they don't have to review the plans. But they won't give us credit for them unless we meet MoDOT standards for road, road bridge work, which we're doing. Well, I don't know.
I think you'll see a big difference.
Those bridges are going to be built higher than where they are now. I would assume.
Well, you're, you're going to bring up Third Street and open it up, right?
There's been talk and certainly no decision.
Start building bridges.
And who knows, you know, it's really your decision is what you do with Third Street. I mean, they're going to talk about, do you need it or not?
I think you need it.
You could save a lot of money.
You didn't do it. Yeah.
By not doing it.
Save a lot of money.
Did you see the cost of Third Street? I mean, you say you do it cheaper, but you look at the cost of Third Street.
Well, you got Main Street, you got Main Street, Fourth Street, ways in.
It looks like it's around half a million dollars.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I mean, it's already beveled up. You know what I mean?
Depends what the citizens of that, you know, if they really think that Third Street's a crazy enough road or, you know, we need it.
Tear it out.
Take it out.
Leave it out.
Just leave it out and have your...
How much you think that'd save us?
Well, if you look at the numbers, it looks like it's about a half a million dollars with all the dragging and approaches.
That would definitely be enough to, they're out south.
Keeping in mind, that's not really what it would cost. It's the Corps estimate.
Right. Well, I don't know, but it's a half a million on 12. How much, how much would that be on our 3 million?
Well, but if the Corps estimates it a half a million, the actual cost might be closer to 400,000 or 350,000.
But we could never...
Save us some money.
We would never have those cuts.
If you were to decide to do that and you spend $100,000 in demolition expenses, which is extraordinary.
Right. That's all you can do.
You know, you do reduce the scope of the project by $100,000 because you take that element out.
Well, Randy's a citizen over there. What do you think, Randy?
I want Third Street. Sorry. It's all about that. I want Third Street through.
It's a good shot. It's a straight shot.
A half a million dollars tomorrow in line?
Well, it's not really, I mean, the citizen's money.
But to think about how it's going to impact the residents of that ward though, they're going to be, they're going to be cut off essentially.
Not if, not if you...
Not entirely, but I mean, it's going to make it awkward.
You'd have to put a four-way stop. You'd have to put a four-way stop on Ford and Leahy. You'd have to put a four-way there.
I don't know. I, you know, I'd like to see the street stay like it is and just let it be a bridge.
Especially bringing people from the other side. No, no, it's just, this is such a long, such a non-conductive duty.
You can call our ambulance over that way. Well, that's another thing. That's a good one.
Well, consider they come down Fourth Street anyway.
We're a ways from that one.
Man, you, you said something there with that, the big word if, if it's funded, you said, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
This is eight years.
We don't know that the 12 million will ever get funded. I mean, it just depends on the influence we have with Congress and President and all of those things, so...
Well, we can still go ahead and get started.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, yeah.
We know we can spend our three and hopefully, as Martin said, we can hopefully have some impact, but...
We can get that bridge.
It's something for our money.
A bridge or two bridges and that's, that's a big, big deal right there.
I think it is. We've talked, everybody that seems like they know anything thinks that take Third Street out will make a definite improvement. So whether we take it out and leave it out or take it out and put a new one in, that I think everybody agrees is at the top of the list, so I'm sure that will be the first project.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a bottleneck for sure.
Since it went in.
Then it may. Who knows? It may fix everything.
Yeah.
But we still need new bridges on Fourth Street.
There's nothing wrong with that bridge, is there?
It could be a little wider.
It doesn't pass enough water, other than the fact that it...
No, on Fourth Street.
Same, both of them are kind of bottleneck.
Third Street's worse than Fourth Street's.
Yeah, I've never seen it go over the top, a Fourth Street bridge.
Well...
Even, oh, no, no, it did that one time.
But even then, it's not a question of that, it's a question of what's happening at the stream.
Yeah. The traffic. So I want to see the new bridges where the traffic goes.
Yeah.
Well, again, that discussion was for...
We got time.
Right.
So we're moving forward. We're moving forward.
I haven't heard any objection, I mean, but if you, unless someone says, wait a minute, don't do that, I want to think about it, then we can proceed and send the letter and get them working it.
I see we proceed.
And this is what Levy District Two signed off on.
This is, yeah, if we, if you want to do something else, we'd go back to Levy District Two and say, you know, we need to reconsider this other thing.
They, they signed off.
If the Board passed a resolution, it's forwarded this option.
Alternative two.
Yes.
I said it before.
I agree with Shawna.
Let's move on.
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't get this. In doubt to you to look at for the meeting.
What do you think?
I think so far.
Tom?
We were, we were...
I think so far.
We're waiting, we're waiting for information on this in response to Tom's request data on the comparative door patch versus conventional.
No idea. Thank you. He's being...
Dave, you want to come forward? There's a lot of, you have to make a lot of assumptions when you do something like this because...
Don't have a straight roller. I thought we got a small roller.
Yeah.
Do they use it over here?
Yeah.
I think you all have the same plate that you had. I think they have that at Seston.
Now, are they stamping that down when they're doing the small patches?
Using the roller.
The, the material costs are, Dave, you want to copy this? That we did your... So I could understand. I figured I couldn't understand it, but no hope.
Well, we'll blame it on the computer.
So when you look, when you're going through this, Dave, if I made a mistake, call it to our attention. On the door patch, I've got a column there that shows the, the various costs and as it compares to the conventional. In the material on the door patch, you have oil, rock, and transportation to go pick up the materials. The door patch materials end up costing $1,073.22, so they're more expensive than the materials for the conventional, although the hauling is, is more because we got to go further. But the, one of the critical things, you'll know... But the, one of the critical things you'll notice in a note, which is at the bottom, is that when we, when we go pick up materials, the, on the, on the oil, we can get 10 tons a day versus the asphalt, because of equipment size and getting cold while you're using it, we can effectively only, only deliver in place six tons. So we start off with kind of a production deficiency with the conventional approach. And, and, and we just can't get as, we can't get as much material here that we can get, and we can't get it placed as, as efficiently as you can with a doer patch. Then below, you'll see the, the equipment differences. They come out about the same. The patcher's $5,000 a month, so if you just divide by 30, you get $166 a day usage. Be aware that we don't have to take the patcher for a month. We just use a month, a monthly rate as kind of the, the basis for comparison. Our equipment, the, the dump truck and the roller, basically, comes out to be about 380. The labor is the same. We've got a four-man crew working however many, now, except for, for the following. We, we believe that the doer patcher, we don't know the factor, but we believe that the doer patcher is going to get a lot more work done in the same period of time. So I put those figures in to balance out because we're not sure. Dave said, "You know, what, what it takes us a month to do five hours a day with the conventional, could take us two weeks with the doer patcher." It might be three weeks, but it's not going to be a month. So there will be a labor savings, we just didn't have quite the, the, the definitive, yeah, we just don't know. So we put a note at the bottom on the pickup, the, the six tons versus the 10. The next factor has to do with the quality of the product. You know, everybody sees what we do. We, we, we buy the asphalt, we put it in place, we roll it, we roll it in. It is not the best work. Not because of the manpower and their lack of expertise, it's because we lack the equipment to, to put down the, the oil that you typically do before you place the asphalt in an, in an open hole. We don't have an oil pot. So what we put in tends to come out quicker than it should. The doer patch has all of that built in. So you're really getting a, a better product. And a product that would cost us an additional $35,000 in equipment expenditure in order, in order to achieve with the conventional approach. So I think, I think Dave thinks, that the use of the doer patch will produce, because of the savings and efficiency, the, the $600 difference per day will, will, will definitely be saved. But more importantly, you, what you're going to get is going to last longer. It's going to be a better product for the city. At least based on the county's experience and our observation and the testing that they did in St. Genevieve, what, three, four years ago?
About three, yeah.
Yeah, well, they brought one over and did the little spot show, but when I, right after I got here, on Front Street, but that-
Before you got here, we did the one-
Pine Street.
On, on North.
Park Street.
And they're still, still holding up.
And they're still holding up.
And we put that one pretty thick.
Yeah.
I think that one was probably, you know, three inches thick, so.
So what, what we'd like to recommend is a lease of the, a rental, I'm not saying of the doer patch, for some trial period. Yes, sir.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I, I thought we were going to do Plan Three, yet to, a contractor coming in and doing it all.
Yeah, they, they don't, they don't have one. You'd have to find somebody who owns one and, and do all the offers.
I thought somebody said they would do it themselves, come in.
We, we did suggest that, but when Dave checked with them, they said they don't do it.
Can we, can we just rent it for a month?
We can rent it for, we think we can get a two-week rental.
Oh, okay.
And we, and if we get a two-week rental, Dave says if it, if it works like it's worked before, and we come up with a schedule on where we're going to use it and when we're going to use it, that we can probably get done in that two, maybe a third week, everything we need to do.
What, what kind of restrictions on the products are, is there for? But it's raining, can you cut this down?
No. You know, you, you don't want to put any asphalt base down when it's raining. But like I said, the day after, we could go there and blow it out with that roller that's on there.
So keep it in mind that-
You may lose a day.
There'll be some days.
You might lose a week, too.
But, but this is set up on a month.
It's just that you use a monthly, we, 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 they said it's $5,000 a month.
I don't, I don't-
I mean, how much is it for two weeks? Is it, what? If you rent it for two weeks?
Yeah, I don't, I-
Is it 3,000 or?
Two weeks, sit the weather. I, I would think that the potential benefit is worth the cost of, of trying this product.
I think so, too.
And giving David enough window to get it done.
And do it right.
As quickly as possible, but you know what? Rain three days, you're out for four or five days, and I mean, you know, those things can happen.
Yep.
I would be-
Especially this time of year.
In favor of, of, this is a, different product, it's a better product. It crosses the hurdles that we have by not having some equipment ourselves and test drive it. And I think the test drive's going to be that expensive. And we know that what we did before has held up good, so I don't see any adverse effects of the test drive.
Well, I think of this, too, you've got to remember, when we do the doer patch, we've got to use a roller to go over it, so this way, we just keep moving, because you can drive on this immediately. So, I mean, traffic, you can open traffic immediately.
Yeah, and, and we also talk about safety, is that when you're doing it, it takes four minutes, and, and you should have five, because you needed to flag.
Actually, six, so.
Or second, yeah, one at each end, one at each side. With, with this, we're, we're in the street list. We can do better signalization and traffic control. So there, there are kind of those soft benefits that don't directly relate to the, the bottom line cost of doing it.
Do we pick it up? I mean, do we have to go get it, or do they deliver it?
Uh, I'm sure either one of them, we'd have to go to probably the other side of Farmington to get the oil anyway, so we just pick it up and go and fill it up. And this thing with this is, too, is you plug it in at night. So once we, let's say if we can figure, and we go faster, we could send a guy back over and get another load, plug it in at night, we're ready to go at 7:00 in the morning instead of waiting until, you know, to get a load back, so.
And, and they include training as part of the rental. They'll send them in and educate us on the use of the, the equipment.
Did you get anywhere with them stocking the oil for you yet?
Uh, not yet. But the county's talking about maybe they're going to buy a tank, so that'd be closer for us, so. And what they're talking, they might even actually buy one, and maybe we can, you know, borrow their-
Sign a doer patch?
Yeah. That's one of the conversations I had with them, you know, talking about, they might buy one, so.
Well, they're bound. The question about it, they, they like, they like-
Do you have to clean the equipment before you turn a pack on to them?
Well, we get it, man.
Here's all of our mess bag. So I'd just say, are we in agreement that we're going to test run this?
No, I didn't add that, because we've never did it before, so I don't know how long it's going to take. Anytime you deal with oil, it's, it's messy, I'll tell you that.
They got, they got tools, too, that kind of like, if you've got a high spot in it and stuff, and you're working-
You can actually just use a loop. I mean, you can actually do it, but from, uh-
Do they, do they supply that, or you guys got that?
We, we got that, yeah. But if you get good enough with it, you know, you can just lay it down, and it's going to take us a few holes, too.
It's like spray paint, more or less.
Yeah, you know.
That's sort of a demonstration of a park.
But you don't have any runs with, with this.
Yeah.
What are you looking for, Martin?
A yay?
Well, yeah. I mean, we're going to have to bring out leases, we're going to do it.
Okay.
Or holes, or whatever, it's going to be cleaned every night, you know?
Yeah.
We, we don't know what the cost is for two weeks.
We can find out. It's not going to be half.
Last week.
It's going to be a little bit more than a month.
That doesn't look good, Dave.
For a month.
But would it, would it be still being cold? I mean, you know, we got-
There's going to be days, and I'm not going to be able to use it, I'll be cutting ourselves too short.
Yeah, we should, well, the operational issues are something that Dave and his crew will, will take care of, I think. We just need to decide if we want to move forward or not.
And you're going to bring it into, and then we'll have to vote on it? Are we voting no?
Well, we can't enter a contract without your approval, so we're going to bring in a resolution, ordinance, authorization.
But you know, I guess it can't really wait too awful long, because of the fact that, you know, we got all these holes we need to fill.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Then maybe the weather will-
Three to twice and move forward.
Yeah, do it twice and one night.
Oh, yeah.
We can do that.
Once you want to have a special meeting.
Yeah, whatever.
You can do that.
We can put it together.
Well, we can put it together, but Dave, you want to take the time for a special meeting? Do it.
As long as everybody's in agreement, we all don't have to be here.
Well, you've got to have five.
Well, you're on main.
You can go to the mall. Tuesday, Wednesday, next week, or whatever. How we go?
So Monday's the 31st.
How about Tuesday?
Will that be posted?
Long enough.
Posted long enough?
Yeah. Tuesday. You only get 24 hours.
Can we do it early?
Sure, do whatever time you want to do it.
Five o'clock?
Five would be good.
How many can make it at five?
Tuesday, are we doing the Tuesday?
I'll be here.
Oh, yeah.
Five, okay.
One, two, three.
I never know.
I'm looking.
While we're talking about this, there's a difference in the rock that we can use.
I can do it.
We can do the 3H rock, clean rock from tar rock, which the county says that they quit using because they went to the trap rock. It's a lot more expensive, but it's cleaner, and it kind of-
But Dave, don't interrupt. There's a couple of things about the trap rock that create a huge advantage. It's less absorbent, so you use less oil, which is the expensive part of your pot.
Yep.
And it's super tough and has longer wear, and it creates better angles.
It's not round.
And this, and this material price, you use the trap rock.
Yeah, excellent. I, I don't think we ought to try to cut-
Corners there.
There.
Yeah, because that, that rock up there is, is soft, and it's, it's dusty, and oil and dust does not mix, and-
Well, it's very absorbent, too. So I would, I would recommend, from my small perspective, to separate out the trap rock.
That's going to be my suggestion.
Okay, it's on Tuesday, huh?
Tuesday at 5:00.
Tuesday at 5:00. Okay.
And that's about the only thing, that's the only thing on it, right?
I have one item to it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So we don't even need to sit down?
Since we're talking about pot holes, has anybody contracted, contacted in Missouri Petroleum?
We haven't, we haven't called them to come out.
Should we be setting a date in the, maybe in April or something like that, that they can, or it might be October again before we get to it?
No, 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 no. I called him a couple of weeks ago, right, right at that last meeting, and he said he's waiting for the weather to break, and he's thinking it's probably going to be around the middle of April. But, you know, he wants to make sure that the weather is, is perfect, and he's going to let us know, or going to let me know at least, I told him, I want a week in advance because we've got to let people downtown, because he's closing people downtown now. That's what he wants to do to get it done, so.
Well, and we want to get it done.
Yeah, so.
We'll cooperate.
Again.
Again.
Well, I mean, that's good. I mean, looking at the middle there.
What's he going to do, Dave? Scrape this out here the whole time, or what?
Uh, he's going to come down and look at it, and he, I asked him coming down, he's like, well, he said he'll, he'll come down later on, he just didn't, he said with the rain and the snow, we didn't want to come down right now, but he's going to look and see, and probably they're just going to do it in layers, is what, what I'm thinking.
Well, if them roller layers is down now.
Well, we're going, we're going to have to, because that got down into the pavement, so we'll have to go through there. And if we get this machine before then, that would work out perfectly there.
So you can be able to level that up, because of any spots there.
Well, what I'm saying is, if it broke loose here, you've got to patch it. Here, it's okay, but what if a week or a month later we done with it, it starts breaking loose there, lift and shit? I mean, it's going to lift all over, well, if it's lifting, it's going to lift everywhere yet.
Well, the whole problem is, John, is when we did that, we knew that that road was kind of messed up, but it was sealed, you know, to make it last longer. Yeah, there's probably spots under it, but it's going to be solved, you know?
But it didn't adhere. It's like a paint, it didn't adhere.
Yeah, so I mean, you're talking about where it's real thin?
Well, it's just, I'm afraid it's going to start breaking loose over here, where it's not broken loose yet.
As long as it ain't cracked up around it, I think we're, you know.
Well, I agree. Now, there's got to be some test of the adhesion of what's down there, or who puts the material and stuff.
And it's going to bust back.
Fall right off.
Well, like I said, we put that, uh, here patch, and we put that on there, that's, that's going to, you know, seal around it, so.
That's going to seal the areas that have already come up.
Yeah. But you're talking about the whole-
It's likely there are other areas that didn't adhere, but also haven't come up yet.
I'll, I'll be on tomorrow, but I'll give him a call tomorrow anyway, and see if he can come down maybe one day next week and-
Yeah, yeah.
can come down maybe one day next week and go through it.
Yeah, I'm sure, it's not the first time they've faced similar situations, but...
No, he actually said, he said this must be the black hole because they've never had problems like this before.
Really?
Well, you know, you know, downtown certainly is different than what this was. You know, we asked him to come back downtown because it was thin spots and he said he would rather just do it all than just patch in the thin spot.
Yep.
Because we really didn't have any, we didn't have any popping up problem when he did downtown.
Right.
And then when he came, well, and even when he did Third Street between, when he was down and did this, between Market and Merchant, that's fine. None of it popped up when he did this. So there's something unique about this. Maybe it was too thick. I don't know.
Yeah, because they put two layers on it, so. But remember years ago, they did downtown and that lasted for how many years? You know, so we've had this done before. This ain't the first time we've used this.
Here, because the base coat didn't stick.
We did Merchant and...
That's our problem.
Part of the main, yeah. And it lasted for quite a few years.
Yeah, there wasn't no problems like that.
Yep.
I remember that now. I don't know. I don't know. Don't think anybody's...
Take a break if you want.
I got here in time for the break.
Yes.
I know I timed it, right? Linda, on Tuesday...
Roll call, please.
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Pouch.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Oakland Foose. Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Brookhill.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Approval agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Martin, I guess, with you?
Well, it's been a very interesting two weeks as your city administrator. I'm about to tell you some things that I discovered that you need to know, and some things you probably don't need to know. The building committee continues to meet. I wrote this and then Jimmy put out the schedule for our next meeting. There's gonna be a review of the mechanical and the plumbing, but there's almost, there's nothing in those codes that we would change anyway, so it would probably just be a, come together and sit down and say, you can't find anything that needs to be changed in these codes except for a couple of little things. So I think most of our time will be spent talking about reviewing our fee schedule to see how it stacks up against communities in the area and then to talk about administrative procedures to see what we can do to ensure that the building permit process is as streamlined as possible. The, I was in a meeting at the Regional Planning Commission and two issues were brought up there, none of which you have to act on, but they're really kind of interesting. It appears that federal government is rapidly moving towards requiring that any, they call them a subcontractor for the federal government, have seven percent of their workforce be qualified under the, or qualified as disabled. And what we don't know is when that occurs, whether it rolls downhill. And if, does that mean that if you receive a grant, that the contractor you hire or the city has to meet some kind of goal for their workforce? And, and I went, after that meeting, went and read the legislation and it isn't clear. And I don't know then what qualifies as a disability. Is it a bad back disability?
I bet they'll let us know.
It's, I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
But that would have a real, I don't know how you do that, honestly. I can't even tell you how a contractor achieves that. The, and then there is also a proposal that was being discussed there, doing away with the exemption of managerial personnel for overtime. You know, you hire a manager, you say, here's what I'm gonna pay you per year, and you say, get the job done. And it takes however long it takes. And so there's talk about amending the law of the Fair Labor Standards Act so that even salaried managerial people would be entitled to, if not employers required, to pay them overtime. The contractor has completed the preliminary plans for the biking trail and turned it in. I've reviewed it and called him and told him he needs to make some amendments, so he's in the process of making those amendments. We, the Landmark Committee meeting, we haven't really changed much except to finalize the recommendations that they're gonna make to you, so the staff is preparing the actual changes in the language that would go into the Landmarks Commission portion of the city codes and the ordinances that you would then have to approve. So one more meeting of that committee to, to get the actual wording in front of them for their review and they'll be reporting out to you. And Alderman Ross, he kind of left it up in the air. We didn't set a meeting, but he would like for me, and I think it's a good idea, to go ahead and fix a date for that, which I will do tomorrow. The, we talked about the Levy District and the work session. The IDA had their annual meeting, you know, they don't have work to perform, but they have to meet every year to stay in good standing, so they had their annual meeting. We discovered that the registered agent was still Bo Beckerman, so that is something that needs to be changed, so I'm gonna work with them to get that changed. And Jim Francis agreed to serve as the registered agent. We completed the reviews on the responses to the RFQ for the Main Street Trail. I think I've described to you before, there's this specific procedure you have to follow if you're using federal funds for these projects. Criteria you have to apply when you're evaluating the respondents to your request for qualifications. We did that. We did the scores. Brenda did it and independently I did it. And while we came up with a little different scores, we ended up with the same recommendation. And so we'll be meeting with Hearst Roche, the engineer who's doing the hiking biking trail over Parkwood, but, you know, it wasn't because they're doing that. That didn't give them any advantage. It was just a question of what's your history, how many similar projects have you done, what are your capacity and ability to perform, and it just, they came out on top. I like to give, and I don't want to prolong this more than necessary, but I would prefer to work with the local, or at least regional, people. And these guys are in Arnold, so that's not so bad. But when you're using federal funds, you can't, that's not a criteria you're allowed to use. So I sometimes feel constrained because, you know, there's some good engineers in the area who could do the work, that employ people who are closer to home, and, but that's not allowed. We've had some conversations about municipal band budget. You have on your agenda tonight a revision to the budget. It's consistent with the meetings that I've had, with the, the conversations and the meeting with the, Mr. Jim Donzie, who's now kind of doing the administrative work for the band. They asked that we, they want forty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to pay musicians, and I've got the application of how that would be used here. We took it out of their emergency fund. They had eight thousand dollars in projected carryover. So your amendment today will be moving that forty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the anticipated carryover into the special services line, whereas that's the line item from which they spend. Then at our next meeting, since we don't make a distribution until May, in April, we'll take care of the contract itself, which reflects these changes. But that'll be a follow-up to your approval of the resolution, of the resolutions tonight to make the budget amendment. And again, since we don't pay them till May, we've got time to do it at subsequent meetings.
Does, does that affect the grant program at all, right?
No.
So it stays the same? It's just like you're pulling money out of, what was going into the emergency fund?
At the end of the year, if everything goes as it should, because this money's pretty fixed, they'll be carrying, oh, instead of carrying over eight thousand, they'll be carrying over three thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Which is fine. And we also got that CD, and I asked them, I said, is there, the CD matured or will mature Monday? Monday? Tuesday? And I asked them, I said, now, do you anticipate the need to make any expenditures for music, equipment, instruments, the capital expenditures? I said, because we're about to tie up your money for another six months. So they gave that some consideration and said they don't foresee that for this summer. So we're just gonna roll the CD over and then revisit it when they need to.
And these, these band members haven't had a raise in over, what, fifteen years or something?
And, you know, as we discussed, you can't do anything else with the money. I mean, it's not like, it's helping anybody sitting in the bank, so.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of questions when we get to reviewing their contract and talking about that, but those certainly don't need to be addressed tonight.
Well, and perhaps the thing to do then is, when we do that, is to ask them to attend the work session and just go through it before. I brought to your attention this charter issue and, and, and two things were happening. One charter was asking for an easement to put an equipment panel on, which was, I didn't relate it to the conversation I was having with others about this change of service that's going, taking place. And so finally, the guy, local guy from charter brought the regional guy from charter in and we sat down and, and this is what I know of. And I don't, this is not a technology with which I'm intimately familiar, but what it comes down to is that they're going to use the fiber optics system to interconnect Cape to Perryville to Farmington and St. Genevieve. And so whatever's happened in any other community in terms of upgrading and changing the service will also happen here. And we don't need to do anything to get that to happen. We can't stop it from happening. It's a decision they made. It's what they're gonna do with their system. And I asked them about the Perryville thing and they said, yeah, you know, we got that. And then we called her back and said, yeah, we'll do it, but we were already gonna do it. So it was just a misunderstanding. Somebody issued this press release and never bothered to kind of talk about it. They're gonna abandon the tower and their equipment building that's there now. And so that lease, I guess, will be somehow discontinued with Donzie and Falcon Telecommunications and whoever it's in. Frank and I, and Jackie and I will have this conversation in a little while, trying to figure out who's on first. They're gonna ask from us twenty-five by thirty-nine foot easement. It's not at that same site. It's closer to Matthews, which, once we get all the actors straightened out, what the proper way of approaching it is will be brought to your attention. But the end result is they're gonna put in this new equipment, take down the tower, and, and the citizens of St. Genevieve will be getting digital and HTV. And I asked them, I said, well, not every citizen wants this new technology. And I've heard from a couple and said, you know, I'm happy with what I have. And the, so I said, is it gonna affect rates? And they said, well, we can't say that at this time, which means to me that it probably is. But it's kind of like the insurance question on, you know, car truck. Well, our rates are gonna go up anyway, so how do you know whether it's going up because of that or it's going up for some other reason? So anyway, that's the story on that. And again, we'll end up coming back to you ultimately with this easement request once we get it figured out. And the final issue.
One. This one will affect seven ninety-eight midway. Fiber optics?
It's gonna put them on...
I don't know.
I asked that question, I did ask that question, and he said it will not affect the current programming. Now, the only thing I don't know...
It'll change the channel.
Is whether it will change the channel.
Numbers, because it'll be up in the nine hundreds.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So we're seeing if we could get maybe seven ninety-eight would be a nice channel to get. We talked about that.
You talked...
And it will also affect this TV here, too, because we'll have to get a digital.
Have to get a digital, yeah, you need a converter.
Yeah.
Or it's cheaper to buy it. TV.
It's gonna make some changes.
Finally, the Mississippi Lime Citizen Advisory Panel was held yesterday. The most interesting thing out of that came a couple of questions that I have received. One is people complaining about the white dust cloud that covers Highway sixty-one from time to time.
Yeah.
And they explained that it was because in the winter, humidity drops, these places where they've got, he said they call it lime sludge. He said it's not really sludge, it's just the residual lime product from the scrubber stacks is deposited. And, and when the humidity drops and wind picks up, it blows. And he said, we're, they're covering it as, now, they've got one, one of the, I call it a pond, for lack of a better term, covered, and they're working on the second one. Of course, while they're out there driving around in trucks, it tends to stir it up. But the third one will have to be left open, but it's down at the bottom of the hill, so it doesn't get exposed to the wind that these problems we're having now. And so they, they explained that they were addressing it. I asked them about the house they own at the corner of Market and Highway sixty-one. He said it's actually in the name of the Mississippi Lime Trust or Foundation or something, and that he has to, anything that's gonna be done with that has to go to this Board of Trustees. And he said, what do you want? And I said, well, and Sandra echoed these, you know, could you like just fix it up, you know, paint it? Bad boards, replace them and, you know, we don't have to make it suitable for occupancy, just take care of the outside. And he said he would be conferring with the trustees and that usually what happens is he goes to them and tells them something and they say, just do it. So hopefully we can look forward to their taking care of that. So. That concludes my report.
Question, anybody? I'm going to the staff reports. Sandra had a commitment this evening, but you have her report here. All these.
Plus she has to pass out these announcements. This, I'll address, she would have addressed this, but the open air market at Bolduc, I don't know if you've heard about that? But you know that Bolduc has acquired some property in downtown and that they have plans for more and more activities that will be consistent with their mission and of interest to people who visit St. Genevieve. This open air market is kind of first major step in that direction. And Beth, you might know more about this than me, but it's gonna be on April the twenty-sixth. There will be products on display there, there will be some produce, locally grown produce and other edible goods. And they're gonna try and create, you know, have people in costume and it'll be more of a festive environment than, than just walking around and looking at Bolduc's properties. So, and Beth is volunteering to elaborate. Please.
It's actually gonna be every Saturday and Sunday from April through, they're hoping the end of October, from eight to three, and they hope to do it in the parking lot behind the old First Bank Building that the Bolduc Properties now own. And if they're accepting people who want to do tables and things like that, you should just call the Bolduc House for information. But they hope to do it every weekend, Saturday and Sunday throughout the season, basically.
So they're gonna do it during that weekend, please?
That, I don't know what they're gonna do about that.
So that'll be in competition with the Farmer's Market?
Yeah, that's a...
They've been speaking with the people from the Farmer's Market. I'm not sure where those conversations have been.
Farmer's Market's gonna be at the KC Hall this year. Under Pavilion like they have the last several years.
That was the question, one of the questions that the Tourism Advisory Council had for her about that, and she was gonna try to see what they were gonna be doing.
Well, that's what Carol Klein told me, and she's one of the big shots of it, so. Patty Nagrasa, David, we talked about that, but she said, no, we're gonna stay at the KC this year and they're gonna have Saturday during the Fed, they're gonna be, usually it used to be Friday, but now they're gonna go back to Saturday. So they are gonna be on our grounds for this year, so maybe next year.
Anything else, Sanders?
No, I don't. Two resolutions on the agenda, having to do with grant applications. I'll talk about those when we get to them.
Okay. Eric, anything?
Would you welcome to answer any questions if you have any?
I think it was fairly straightforward.
I'll take the opportunity to, while Eric's giving his report, to talk about something I didn't include in my report. It was a truck that was going through downtown that ran over a fire hydrant and knocked over a stop sign and a local citizen observed it and came in and reported it to us. The police were able to find the truck that did it. And we have the information on the company and we will be sending a request for reimbursement for our time and materials for the damage it was doing.
And I wanted to elaborate on the meeting that Martin spoke of at Citizen, or at Mississippi Lime. I addressed the concern that one of the Aldermen had about the recent hiring process. There was some concern about the number of local residents that were included in that. According to their representative, I don't have the exact number, I believe it was twenty-two that were hired. He said half of those were St. Genevieve residents and that their hiring process is essentially hiring the most qualified applicant for that position. And of those positions, twenty-two, eleven of them, half of them were local residents. So I hope that that addressed the concern that was, that was raised, so.
Actually, I can attest to that because I do the work stress testing for them.
Okay.
And it was definitely that many or more.
Okay.
I can't imagine how it'd be anybody else's business about who they hire.
I, as a...
Most qualified individual.
As a member of the committee, I was asked to address it with them, so I did so.
Well, I agree with you, but on the other hand, you know, they've got the Citizens Advisory Panel, and the purpose we're organizing it is to find ways that they can build bridges to and connection to the community, because I think it felt like there was some disconnect there. Now, nobody can force them to give preference to somebody, but it certainly is a way to build those bridges.
Excuse me, how often do you give me?
We wait for them to call us quarterly.
Yes, the next one is in June, I believe.
And honestly, they're very receptive. I mean, I, you know, I keep notes of things people... I mean, I, you know, I, I keep notes of things people say to me about how they feel, and they ask questions about Mississippi Lime, and I take them to them, and put them on the table, and they talk about them. And, uh, you know, a couple of examples, I, they've already done some things, like the, the questions that Alderman Stupi had about problems with traffic, you know, they've done some things to address the congestion on Highway 61 twice a day. So, I, I think they're trying.
Does anybody have any specific questions about the, the report? Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. Uh, give you guys an update, there were three water main breaks for the month of February. One was on Biltmore, one was on South Fifth Street, and one was on Crestview Drive. The other issue was there, it's not exactly a leak, but we found a residence on Jefferson Street that had been unoccupied for an unknown amount of time. This residence was found to have a, by a real estate, uh, person. They found that there was a leak in the basement. Uh, when we went to the residence to find the meter pit, there was no meter pit. Uh, the city had no record of, of this building ever having water service. Yet, we did find a water valve and a water line. We're planning to start a review of, uh, buildings in St. Genevieve that have active services or have ac- have active water with no account. So, I don't know, I don't believe there's too many in the system, if any more, but we will, we will do an investigation on it. During the, uh, the act, the truck driver incident with the downtown, the other day, he also ran over a, a fire hydrant during the process. Crews worked till 1:30 in the morning repairing this hydrant.
Along those lines, I'd like to report a letter of compliment we got from a residence who was without water during the night, while their hotel, it got turned back on. But, uh, she was, uh, most appreciative of the staff's prompt response and continuing the effort to get it solved as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
For its fire hydrants anymore, it's not like in the, in movies where they're getting off to holding their spray in real high in the air? Not anymore, is that correct? Do you have water spewing from that?
This one we did. This was an older hydrant, it wasn't a traffic hydrant, it wasn't a breakaway.
What's them or breakaway, where?
Yeah, the, the newer ones are, yes.
Right. So, you did have one?
Yes.
Anything else for Steve?
Thank you.
Any committee reports?
We got Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cross your, Dave. Get up here, I'm sorry.
I'm here to give my report.
All right, go ahead, give it.
Okay, I'm going. Uh, basically, you know, you see on there, we've been, uh, keeping pretty busy doing everything, and what we're gonna be doing is a lot of patching, so, and lots.
Well, and a couple of citizens have called, sent emails, texts, uh, questioning the patching that we have been doing, because to them it doesn't look like a permanent patch. And the answer is, in, in many cases, it isn't. It's just an attempt to get some material in the hole to make sure there's no damage to, to vehicles. And we recognize that, you know, it, it appears to be somewhat incomplete. Uh, so, for those who have observed that and have concerns about it, rest assured, where that has occurred, we're gonna, we're gonna get back to it.
Yeah, that's, I was about ready to say that. Uh, yeah, we're, we're going in trying to make it, you know, where you can at least drive on it, then come back and do it, you know, properly. But, uh, right now, people's just gonna have to be patient. I mean, we can't be every street, and, and I picked Main Street to start with by just no reason, but just to, 'cause it was a long stretch and get her done, and, and we're gonna be moving different places, so just be patient with us, you know, we can't do everybody's house at once. And we need to be painting lines, I need to throw mosquito biscuits out in the midst of all this patching, so. And we do have enough material to fog mosquitoes this year, if you want us to.
Well, there's no sense in holding on to it.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you know if both tigers are coming back?
Uh, let me see, about three weeks ago, when we had a decent day before the snow, I, there was mosquitoes on my front porch, so.
Dave, I have one question about the light pole in all these springs.
Mm-hmm.
I know they fixed it before, and then the thing starts leaning over again. What exactly did you do to it?
We poured concrete, we dug around and poured concrete.
Dug around?
Yep, and there's a couple more out there, we need to do that, too, but.
There was another one up, maybe a few blocks up.
Yeah, we're kinda waiting for the ground to thaw out, you know, so we wanted to fix that one, 'cause it was really going over, so.
Why? How many did you fix?
Well, that's about all we can do with it, you know.
Anything else for Dave?
Point Base, you, you have some beds on Point Base?
Uh, Point Base, uh, now you have, uh, Martin and I talked about it today, and basically what, uh, you're gonna get an engineer to design it, or?
Yeah, it, it doesn't do any good to have, have, if we know we're gonna do it, and know where the funding's coming from, uh, getting a preliminary estimate really doesn't serve a useful purpose. Uh, so, I think the decision was to go ahead and retain somebody to design it, and then we'll have specifications people can bid, and we'll get real money prices, just somebody's, uh, off the cuff estimate of what they think it's gonna cost.
And actually, Loppy kinda said that, he said he didn't really wanna come up and show his cards by telling us what it would cost, and if he wants to, you know, to bid on it, so.
I drove up Fourth Street, and I saw all the marks and everything, and it looked like almost the whole street is marked up, so.
Yeah.
Your recommendation is that, uh, engineer design, as far as replacement, from Riverview to Biltmore.
Biltmore.
To, uh, do you think there might be some water problems?
There is water problem there, it's, uh, storm drainage. If we fill it in, it's gonna make it, uh, level with the road, and we're gonna force water over on some of them neighbors, and right there by Phil Rogers, and I don't know who lives next to him anymore, but.
Griffin.
Griffin.
Griffin lives on the.
Corner.
Corner there.
Yeah, Griffin, uh, but that one, though, next to, or south.
Frank, also lives in the one.
Is that something we should be looking at as far as our money?
Yeah, the other one, uh.
Design, you know, it's a, probably a $10,000 engineering item. And that's not doing the work, that's just me designing.
Right.
Because of all the marks that are up there, we figured out that just the material alone's gonna be around $10,000. And like I say, it's not gonna be up to where the drainage, it's gonna fix the drainage at all. So, if we have to redo it, that, everything that we stuck, you know, stick in there, it's gonna be, uh, tore out, so we're gonna be wasting, you know, I mean, that's just material, it's not our labor, so.
Now, now, that, that's a road we can use the Special Road District money on, so.
Right, so.
But it's not.
But we don't want them to go up there and start fixing all these, spending all this money, and we're gonna do something with that money and fix this.
That's, that's what he's talking about.
Right.
Now, I can take and just put some asphalt and basically waste about $2,000 instead of $10,000. And that's.
If, if we spend $10,000 on engineering, um, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project, I, I can't say, 'cause that, Dave's talking about drainage structures that somebody's gonna have to design, and I don't know, but just in terms of pavement, you know, that's kind of the order of magnitude of the amount of work he's talking about doing. Uh, you know, we get $48,000 from Special Road District, so, you know, you're still looking at using, if you were to do that, pretty much using up what we expect to have available for, for roadwork, using the Special Road District money, not counting the Special Road District money.
So, right now, we have how much in our account in Special Roads?
Well, we will have forty, forty-eight.
We will, we will have forty-eight.
Yeah, we haven't gotten their payment this year, but it's in their budget, so we'll, we'll get it. Should get it this month, thought, may still get it this month.
Probably what we need to do is just go ahead and get the design done, fix it right, see how much it costs. Well, yeah.
Well, you don't know, you gotta do that. I mean, I can, you know, I, I can use contemporary pricing like Porter Street and figure out how many dollars per linio foot the pavement's gonna cost, but it's the other things that I, I just don't have a way of estimating, because I don't know what's gonna be needed to, to handle the, the stormwater.
But in the meantime, we need to get that road where people can drive on it, so, I mean, I'd suggest just let me put, put asphalt in there, get it to where it's drivable, and instead of trying to patch it with concrete.
That's not for a durper patcher?
That, we can do quite a bit with that durper patcher.
There you go.
I mean, it's, it's still gonna be a temporary patch, but, but, yeah.
Pretty rough, or? It is now.
Oh, yeah, it's real rough now.
It'll be better when you.
Yeah, we could level it up a lot, a lot better.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll proceed with our accused for engineering, and let you know what kind of response I get.
Okay, anything else for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Y'all have a good evening.
Okay, now, any, uh, committee reports?
I did, Channel 798, uh, we had a meeting. Martin pretty much covered the charter upgrade.
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
That's okay, that's, no, that's absolutely fine, there was quite a bit of discussion about that. We did do a final approval on our bylaws, we've been working on those, got our state of officers, everybody's in place now. Bob Weiss is our chair, our president, Gary Whitner, vice president, Tish Johnson, secretary, and Sue Gep, treasurer. And Ed Nolte, we locked him in for another three-year term, so. Um, we had, uh, they had purchased some, uh, recycled computers and had to transfer all the files and stuff over, everything's up and running smoothly now. Last week, there was a little glitch, and we've got all that taken care of. Uh, we also had some discussion about sponsoring a video contest with the schools to get the kids more involved, and, uh, that is something I'm gonna be working on the next month or so. Um, there will be, um, we're gonna be reworking the entire control room down there and cleaning all that up and getting that looking better and better order and whatnot. That's gonna be a pretty lengthy process, and that process is gonna be started probably in the next week or so. Along with that, too, we talked about a quarterly report to the Board of Aldermen, and, uh, that will be happening, I think at the second meeting, the 24th of April, there will be a representative that will do a quarterly report, so. So, anyway, um.
Will it be downed, will it be control room?
Do.
Will it be downed?
No.
Just try to test it.
So, that, there, you might see some repeats of some things while they're changing things over, but it won't be down, so. Um, their next meeting would be April the 29th, but they should be here to talk to you before then, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the, uh, approval of financial report for February.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. And the minutes of, uh, March 13th? Uh, 26, huh? Yeah, yeah, it's 13.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, Resolution 2014, 14, a resolution allowing the city clerk to authorize the disposal of city records that are on file that have met the retention schedule and will be destroyed in compliance with the guidelines established by the Secretary of State's Office per RS Missouri 109.2304.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, Resolution 2014, 15, a resolution authorizing the St. Genevieve Tourism Department to apply for a grant from the Keep St. Genevieve Beautiful Grant Program sponsored by the St. Genevieve Master Gardeners Group in the amount not to exceed $2,000.
Make the motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, Resolution 2014, 16, a resolution authorizing the St. Genevieve Tourism Department to apply for a grant from the Marketing Platform Development Matching Grant Program sponsored by the Missouri Division of Tourism in the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Motion to approve. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. Okay, Old Business Bill Number 3969, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of intent between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Miss County and Municipal Police Academy for continuing education training for City of St. Genevieve police officers for 2014.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Roll call.
Alderman Houch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Burnfield.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent, Bill Number 3969 now becomes Ordinance 3908.
Thank you. Uh, New Business Bill Number 3970, first reading.
An ordinance approving amendment of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Fund Supplemental Agreement dated February 14th, 2013.
2013, 14.
2013.
Oh, there is, okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Bill Number 3971, first reading.
An ordinance approving supplemental agreement number one to the original engineering services contract with Hurst Rochay Engineers Incorporated dated November 20th, 2013 for design and construction inspection of project STP 9900061.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Bill Number 3972, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2014 budget relating to the Band Fund Number 25.
Motion to approve. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Bill Number 3973, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2014 budget relating to the General Fund Number 10.
Approve it, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, thank you, Bill Number 3974, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2014 budget relating to the General Fund Number 10 and the Transportation Fund Number 21.
Move, move. Second.
Maybe, maybe fix it off, or a little bit of explanation on this one. Uh, the, the, since we're using Tiff, the Tiff fund for this, and it's in combination with the grant money from the state for the trail, we have to kinda make sure we keep those funds segregated. So, this is moving money into the grant, into a grant fund account that we had, uh, for the purpose of preserving the, the proper record as we go down the, the road with this, uh, this grant match program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, um, public comments, anyone want to address the board?
My name's Bob Browning, I live in Merchant Street, and, um, it's my complaint, one of them tonight is gonna be about our woman, Zerwig is her name. She's abusing her power as a city official, going to my daughter's work, questioning my daughter about her friggin nephew that got me arrested, telling my daughter, oh, that's my nephew that Bob has the beef with. She had no business in hell questioning my daughter. She's not only abusing the power of this right here, of. She's not only abusing the power of this right here, she's also my daughter's supervisor. She had no business doing this. That is tampering with the witness. Tomorrow, I'll call you at 10 o'clock, chief, you're going to go file a complaint on her for tampering with the witness. My daughter's a witness, and you know that. Second of all, one of you guys think I'm some kind of a friggin clown. Now, talk to me, I'm here now as a man. Who thinks I'm the clown around here that I come here only because to be on TV? You know who that would be? Who's got red hair and rides motorcycle?
It's like you're accusing me.
Why are you running your mouth saying the only reason why I'm here is because I want to be on TV? You know...
I don't know what you're talking about.
I do.
I don't.
Okay, that...
I don't know who you're talking to, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I have no clue.
This is bull. That woman has no business. Talk, talk to my daughter about this. Now, like I said, chief, tomorrow, you're going to go file a complaint on her for tampering with the witness like you did to me.
We'll, we'll address that, thank you.
Okay.
Any other?
Mr. Browning, that door's locked, you'll have to go out the back.
Any other comments, anybody else want to address the board? Any other business? Well, we got the approval of a, we got approval of a liquor license request from Teresa Vaughn, St. Genevieve Mercantile and Gallery, 10 South Third, for the sale of beer and wine, including Sunday sales.
Move through, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Any other business?
Mayor, I had a neighbor ask me why there's two aldermen in each ward instead of one. He said he could save $10,000 that way, and...
Statute provides for the city to establish wards when it was set up originally. It doesn't, it doesn't say you have to have four, but it does say you have to have two aldermen for wards, so it's a function of the state statutes for fourth-class cities.
Thank you, I didn't have the answer, it's all... He said bring it up, and I didn't...
Stagger your election process.
Good ideas.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, thank you.